Good afternoon and welcome to the October 15th. Meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum, please?
Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lavell.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Ho.
Mayor Protem Warren.
Yes, I'm here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present with the exception of Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed session agenda and pub -- a closed session agenda and are there any public comments, please?
We do have public comments, we have. Casey Tomassian.
Hello, Mr. Tomassian.
Hello. I respectfully ask that you -- Will pull both closed session items one and two and not go forward with these items and bring them to a city council meeting so that you can present it to the community as to why. And I understand, being a former city councilman, I know how this works so that you've got your city manager probably polled you independently to see whether or not, hey, this is a good idea, so let us continue to move forward with these purchases. And so here we are tonight and with no explanation as to why. And I know for -- I know that school district is -- had been looking or is interested in relocating their district office and the reason why we purchased this parcel was for civic use and office, of course, but they're also part of the government, so -- and I don't know where they stand today, but that's a possibility. The reason why you -- and again, why are we selling the banned shelter? So, again, there's no explanation. So, once it goes and you're asking direction from city council to regard price in terms for both, C1 and C2, CS1, CS2. So, you're moving forward and there's no input from the community. And I know the school district members were called on the carpet for bringing forward the purchase of a property on the west side and no public interaction at that time, so here we are doing the same thing of city council members going forward with a purchase of a property that, you know, there's no community input. So, please reconsider it and don't rush it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comments for closed session. And if I may, can I read what city council will conduct?
Yes, please proceed, Madam City Clerk.
City council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the city council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding certain real property at the intersection of Calmeyon-Jefferson, APNs 906080041, 906080042, and 906080033. With both communities and fidelis advisors, city's real property negotiators being city manager, assistant city managers, development services director, economic development director, and city attorney who will seek direction from the city council regarding price and terms for this property. City council will also conduct closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the city council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding certain real property, Town Square Park Amphitheater, 11 Town Square Park Marietta. City's real property negotiators are the same, city manager, assistant city managers, director of economic development, and city attorney who will also seek direction from city council regarding price and terms for this property. City council will conduct closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.95B to consider the following workers' compensation claim, Vargas v. City of Marietta, WCAB case number ADJ14881305, ADJ14881317, and ADJ15744575. City council will also conduct closed session initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 54956.9, one potential case. City council will also conduct closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B to continue the process on the future appointment of employee -- of employment to the position of city manager.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we are going to recess to closed session and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM for the regular meeting. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 15th regular meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Attorney, are there any announcements provided from closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, she's on her way.
Sorry, sorry. I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session on five items. First, I'd like to clarify on the first two items. My understanding, there was a public comment about properties the council was considering acquiring. I'd like the record to reflect that these are properties already owned by the city and we were talking about price in terms of possible disposition of the property or use of the property. So, the five items are, the first two were to confer with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. In both of these items, the council was updated, no reportable action. The third item was regarding existing litigation in the matter of Vargas versus City of Marietta. The council was updated, no reportable action. The third item was regarding anticipated litigation and this item, the council was again updated and there's no reportable action. The final item was a public employee appointment matter to discuss the future appointment of an employee to the position of city manager pursuant to Government Code 4957B. In this item, the council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Moving on, Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Lavell.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Warren.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Isaac Bravo, remain standing for the invocation led by Bishop Brian Connors from Jesus -- our Church of Jesus Christ Later Day Saints. Hello, Brian.
Your hearts ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. We love thee and we gather here today and give thanks unto thee for thy blessings, for this great country in which we live and for this great city and state in which we reside. We're grateful for those who give of their time and talents to help further the interests of this city. May we be blessed, Father in heaven, with those things that we stand in need of and those wants, and that our desires of our hearts may be righteous, that we may be humbled, and that our hearts may be softened, that we may have the courage to make the right choice, and that we may be a blessing to those around us, our neighbors, our friends, and those strangers, that we may lift them and love them. We pray in thy sacred name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Isaac, and thank you, Brian. Moving on to presentations, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Danielle Encontro, a Family Court Awareness Month Advocate, here to accept the proclamation. But I would like to note that Ms. Encontro would like to share a few words before receiving the proclamation.
Absolutely. Hello, thank you, everybody. I'm here to accept the proclamation and on behalf of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, our committee strives to bring attention to the 58,000 children conservative number that are sent into the hands of their abusers every year through family court. And we strive to educate judges, all the court personnel, on domestic violence, sexual abuse, and coercive control. And we thank the city so much for your support and your advocacy, and we look forward to looking -- to working with you in future years. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, the proclamation, Family Court Awareness Month, whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, FCAMC, is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interests of children. And whereas the goal of the Family Court Awareness Month is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and that acts in the best interests of all children. And whereas the FCAMC strives to educate judges and all other family court professionals across the nation on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research, which is critical component to making decisions that are in the best interests of children. Now, therefore, let it be known that on behalf of the city council of the City of Marietta, we hereby proclaim the month of November as Family Court Awareness Month in the month of October, thank you, for the City of Marietta, dated this 15th day of October. And typically, the mayor signs their certificate, but you have all five signatures on this proclamation. So, if my colleagues would join me, please? Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion in a second, please? I have a motion from MPT Warren, second from Councilmember Holliday. Please vote.
Yeah, I would like to recuse myself from item number seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Motion carries unanimously, noting Councilmember DeForest's recusal for item number seven.
Great. Thank you, City Clerk. Moving on to the city manager administrative update, the city manager administrative updates is an opportunity for the city manager to provide community updates as well as department or commission announcement on current or upcoming projects. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We actually have quite a number of presentations this evening, but first, a couple of quick reminders. Next Tuesday, November -- or, sorry, I'm doing it with you. Next city council meeting, November 5th, we will be going dark. There will be no city council meeting due to the elections and the next city council meeting will be Tuesday, November 19th. And with that, we have our Public Works Director, Bob Melling, which is not the order I have, and he's going to talk, give you an engineering update.
Good evening, Mayor Stone, MPT Warren, council members, city staff and residents of the City of Marietta. Brief update on the work going on on Marietta-Hot Springs Road. For those of you that live on the east side of town, you'll notice that the roadway of Hot Springs Road between Whitewood and Margarita was recently paved last week, at the end of the week. Currently this week, we're doing manhole raising, doing some striping by the end of the week, and we should have the roadway completely restriped and looking fantastic by the end of the month. Project was about $2 million. Imagine $2 million to resurface a roadway between Hot Springs, I'm sorry, between Margarita and Whitewood Road is about six tenths of a mile. But that was a low bid and it was a job well done by our CIP staff. Secondly, the right turn lane into the Marietta Plaza, commonly known as Sam's Club and now Trader Joe's. We bid that project out last August of this year. I got one bid only on that project. Estimate was about $1 million, only received one bid. We're not going to take just one bid and award it, so we plan on rebidding that project in December and probably starting that project again. We'd look at probably starting that construction March of 2025, so hopefully get some more bids on that project. It's the busiest intersection in the city. It's in proximity of the Caltrans right of way, so there are some issues that contractors tend to steer away from, but we're hoping to get at least two to three bids in the next time we bid this project and get a better understanding of what maybe some of the contractors are reluctant to bid that project, but we're looking at that. That's about a $1 million project, all the work will be done at night because it's, like I said, it's the busiest intersection in the city. The last project on Hot Springs Road is the Marietta-Hot Springs Road widening between Margarita and Winchester Road, about a $10 million project estimated. We have our plans completed. We have a couple easements from Edison we're still waiting on, but we plan to actually bid that in December and probably award that project in the same timeframe, March, April of next year of 2025. Probably a 12-month construction project. Be great, though, to have that project completed, six lanes all the way out to Winchester Road. That'd be a great improvement for the city sidewalks and a traffic signal at Calida Lago. Lot of improvements that are, you know, we've been waiting on a long time for this project to come through, so we're really looking forward to that project. One quick update on the Keller interchange, I have my PDT meeting tomorrow with Caltrans. We should be receiving comments back on our draft environmental impact report. Hopefully that goes well. But that's tomorrow, about 10 o'clock in the morning, you hear any yells or screams, that'll be me, either hopefully good and not bad, but I'll probably be able to provide an update to council after that meeting. So, that's my presentation. I'm happy to -- any questions you may have?
Any questions? Councilmember DeForest?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. How long have we been in the process of widening Marietta-Hot Springs Road?
Ooh, that's a good question. I think we started that project probably back in, earnestly, probably back in 2000, I'm going to guess, 14. So, it's a lot of utility relocations, a lot of property acquisition has really slowed the project down on both sides of the streets, close to the apartments, close to the Ronda Association for the condos on the north side. A lot of impacts of the environmental stuff we had to go through, so just the actual acquisition threatening of eminent domain, which we did not do. Takes a while to get people to understand that it's a project that is good for the city and also that all the travelers on the roadway, but it just takes time, unfortunately.
Well, thank you for your perseverance and for all the staff, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions for Mr. Melling? Seeing none, thank you.
And when it's done, it will be amazing.
Yes. Oh, yes.
We're going to have our Finance Director, Javier Carcamo, who has an exciting announcement.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, members of the public. Javier Carcamo, Director of Finance, and as our Madam City Manager said, I have some exciting news to share with you. I want to briefly speak, would you talk to you about Government Finance Officers Association? We recently received an award from this professional organization. They were founded back in 1906 to represent public finance officials across the United States and Canada. This association at this point has over 20,000 members covering from federal, state, local, and special districts. Their mission is to advance excellence in public finance by providing resources, training, and recommending best practices in government finance reporting. They have established several award programs. The one that I will be sharing with you is specifically about the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That program was established back in 1945 and the main purpose was to encourage and assist state and local government in exceeding the minimum requirements and demonstrating the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. So, in order for a government agency to receive the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, the city's financial statements must be -- must demonstrate the implementation of their best practices. It must meet the requirements of a 40-page checklist and the report must be graded in a proficiency in all the categories and sections in the financial statements. So, with that, I am pleased to notify you that the city's annual financial report for the fiscal year June 30, 2023, has met the requirements to be awarded the GFOA Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This certificate, this Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in a governmental agency can receive in both accounting and financial reporting. This is the city's 26th year receiving this award. I believe this will be our 16th year, consecutive years, receiving this award, and of course, this is testament of and commitment from our employees to adhere to the highest accounting and financial reporting standards. Of course, this cannot be done without the dedication and hard work of our entire finance team, primarily our Finance Manager, Jennifer Terry. She works really hard with staff. She led the process last year on both the financial audit and financial statements preparation, so definitely a team work and definitely cannot, this cannot be done with their commitment to the city, and I'm very grateful for the team that I have. So, thank you.
Okay, so as the council knows, the city hosts three separate citizen academies. One is through the fire department, one is through the police department, and one is through city hall. So, we, when we originally started talking about having the city hall citizen academy, we thought we should do something to recognize those citizens who go through all three. So, we're going to bring up Isaac Bravo, our management analyst, and he has special, a few special presentations to make.
You hear me? Okay, great. So, yes, we do have three different academies that all of our residents go through. For those in the audience, these are residents within the city that have dedicated their time to attend these academies, to get a better understanding of the civics at the local level. And so, the city's honoring them tonight. There are six members that we're going to be presenting tonight, and the first one up, if you wouldn't mind coming up, what we'll do is, since this is our first time doing the ambassador recognition, they will come up, we'll present them the jacket, the last one off to the side, and then we'll take a group photo afterwards. So, the first one up is Jennifer Chamberlain, if you wouldn't mind coming up here to the So, Jennifer comes to us from Connecticut. She's a transplant and she pursued college and her husband, correct? Coming out to California. What attracted her to Marietta is the safety that the community has, the school districts, as well as the community overall, the sense of community that Marietta has, which is very unique to the city. She is currently a development services technician in our Public Works Department. In her spare time, that, when she has spare time, she's with her grandchildren, two girls, nine and six, and she also builds Myers-Minks.
Dune buggies.
Dune buggies and participates with her husband in the Nora Mexican 1000, which is a race from Ensenada to Cabo annually. Jennifer is very competitive and wanted to be the first city employee who's also a city ambassador. So, with that, Jennifer Chamberlain. So, Kristi is originally from Orange County. She relocated here again for the schools and the safety that the community is able to provide. She's involved in the medical field and in her spare time, she volunteers at Calvary Chapel Marietta as well as our police department as a volunteer. She wanted to become an ambassador to give back to the community and show, and give to the communities back what she's been able to receive and so, and as well as meet new people and make friends. So, with that, Kristi Dean. Next up, I have Belinda Kanga Chuket. So, Belinda is originally from Montreal, Canada. She relocated here with her husband due again to the safety, the green areas within the community, as well as the numerous playgrounds. She is bilingual and, I'm sorry, she currently works as an elections trainer assistant and she is bilingual in French. Her native language is French, coming from Canada, and she's also found a love for spin classes. The reason that she wanted to engage into the ambassador program was a sense of civic duty and a responsibility to give back to the community that what she loves. And with that, this is Belinda. Okay. Fourth up, Kristen McHenry. Kristen McHenry is a transplant from San Jose, but she spent most of her time in San Diego, approximately 20 years. She works as a principal administrative analyst in the county of San Diego, in the San Diego County Psychiatric Hospital, where she oversees contracts, budgets, and the facility sectors in the hospital. In her spare time, she likes to binge-watch TV shows and explore Riverside County. Before graduating from SDSU, with a criminal justice degree, she toured nine prisons and her first job out of graduating college was working at a female prison. She really enjoys learning and the reason that she became an ambassador was to learn more of local government at this level and to give, and to be involved in the opportunities that Marietta is able to provide like these academies. And with that, that is Kristen McHenry. Next up is Michael Tilton. Michael's originally from South Portland, Maine. He and his wife moved down from Boston in 2009 when they were vacationing out here. They fell in love with the area, sold their house, and moved out here. Mike is a software engineer and his hobbies include running and participating in triathlons. He enjoyed the police academy so much that he actually enrolled in the modular police academy, and he's attending that right now. His goal for becoming ambassador is to meet new people and to give back to the community. With that, that's Michael Tilton. And our last is, but not least, city ambassador is Robin Von Burginter. So, Robin is originally from Boston and she accompanied your husband coming out here to San Diego for the Marine Corps, but she fell in love with California, stayed here and chose Marietta for the safety of the schools and the sense of community that's unique to Marietta. Robin is a full-time realtor, notary, and loan signing agent. In her free time, she is a foodie and likes to find good places to party and dance, as well as rollerblading. Robin loves to learn and is actually in the process of learning Korean. She became a city ambassador to share Marietta's charm and uniqueness to newcomers. And with that, that's Robin. Does anyone want to say something, a few words?
Yes, thank you so much, Isaac. First of all, we want to thank you, Isaac, for all that you do for our city. We're very grateful. To our ambassadors, on behalf of the entire city council, Mayor Protem Cindy Warren, council members Ron Holliday, John Lavell, and Dr. Lisa DeForest, we are so glad that you chose Marietta to be your home. We are so grateful that you've gone through all the academies and now you are ambassadors to our city. Our council is here for you at any time, and we just wanted to say thank you so much to your dedication. God bless and congratulations. God bless and congratulations.
Just real quick, I promise I'll get you guys in, I promise. All right, ready, one, two, three, perfect, council. One, two, three.
And one more. We have Christina Davies, our PIO, who is going to give our community update.
Well, good evening, Mayor, MPT, council members, and the rest of Marietta. I'm Christina Davies, the Public Information Officer, and I'm here just to give you a little update on what is going on in Marietta. So first, we have Market Nights. That is happening on Thursday. Last time I was up here, I was telling you Market Nights was happening on Thursday, and it was going to be hot. It's not going to be that hot, but for some, the seventies may feel a little warm. For me, I consider that cold. But Market Nights is happening on October 17, from five to nine, and of course, that is in downtown Marietta. Then we have Coffee with the City. That's going to be Tuesday, October 22. And we're switching it up a bit. The last Coffee with the Cities, we have done a feature on a specific department. So next department up will be Economic Development. So if you want to learn about businesses coming to Marietta, this is going to be the one for you. Scott Aganian is amazing when he presents, so he'll be there. You can ask him those tough questions about businesses coming to Marietta. And that is, once again, Tuesday, October 22, from eight-thirty to nine-thirty at the address up there. That's also our Marietta Innovation Center. Next, we're going to talk about Rocktoberfest. That is a festival that is happening this weekend, so nineteen and twenty. This is an event that Newman Hospitality Group is putting on. So it is a ticketed event. If you're interested in rock music, German food, beer, it's kind of like an Oktoberfest thing, this is an event for you. You can get tickets at socalrocktoberfest.com. Now, I just want to revisit our Marietta Fix-It app. For people who don't know, we have an app where you can report issues that are, that you see throughout the city. So you can download this app. It's on our website. You go to marietta.ca.gov/fixit. Now, if you want to stay connected, you want to learn about all the things, you know, Bob touched on some engineering, public work stuff, anything you want to learn about Marietta, stay connected with us at marietta.ca.gov/connect. Any questions?
Perfect. None. Thank you so much.
And that concludes our announcements.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Moving on to Governing Body Commission Committee's board reports. The governing body reports is the opportunity for city council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, and commission committee and board meeting attendance. Reports shall not exceed three minutes. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I just would like to thank my colleague, Ron Holliday, for attending as my alternate to the WRCOG meeting. I greatly appreciate that. I had several conflicts, and I thank you for helping me out with that. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you so much, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember LeVille.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item to report. I had my quarterly meeting with the Southwest Financing Authority for the animal, animal shelter here in town. Nothing to report out.
Thank you, Councilmember LeVille. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In addition to the Marietta Santa stops bi-weekly meetings that we have, I attended the Code Enforcement Ad Hoc Committee with Madam Mayor and also the RCA, which is the Regional Conservation Authority. So far in 2024, the RCA has conserved sixteen parcels totaling 2,047 acres. And while that may sound like a lot, the goal is 500,000 acres to be conserved. So we still have a little bit more work to do, but they're, they're working hard at it. And I also attended the Western Regional Council of Governments for Councilmember DeForest. And one of the highlights I wanted to report out from there is they had the HERO program back in the day that they no longer do for residential. They do it for commercial still, but they don't do it for residential. But through that program, sometimes there's payments and stuff that they've received for contracts that are no longer enforced. They're no longer, they've been paid off. And so there are residents throughout the state, because that program went much wider than Riverside County, that, that they have sent money to that have not been cashed. And so 2024, they have sent out $1,056,324 to residents that has gone unclaimed, uncashed checks. For the city of Marietta alone, totals $44,114 from thirty-three residents. So I put on my governing board announcements this link to www.clamit.ca.gov, where anybody can go, not just the thirty-three, but anybody can go and type in their name or their address and see if the state has money that was owed to them that they didn't know about and didn't claim. I don't know what the state number is, but it's, I think it's in the billions that, that they're hanging on to that is not their money. So I would encourage people to go there and see if you have money that is owed to you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Obviously, I'm not on that list because you didn't let me know. The list. Oh, you didn't look, so I could be on that list. Fantastic. Okay, MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the monthly RCTC Commission Meeting on October the ninth, and we unanimously passed a resolution to acquire property for the Mid-County Parkway-Ramonah Expressway Construction Project. Also passed a resolution unanimously to acquire property for State Route 60, Potoroo Boulevard Interchange Phase Two project in the city of Beaumont. There was a twenty-six zero-to-one vote passing the prepayment of the 2017 U.S. Department of Transportation Infrastructure Finance and Innovative Act, called TFIYA, loan for the I-15 Express project. This allows the RCTC full local control of the project without having to do any revenue sharing with, with the government, and allows us to move forward. Also, the RCTC I-15 Express Lane Project Southern Extension Draft Environmental Document Public Review and Comment Period began on October 9, and it goes through November 26. We really encourage all of the public to review this and make comments. The public notice and project, project information can be viewed on the project website Please look at it, get involved, and make your comments. We would appreciate it. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Warren. For myself, as Councilmember Holliday said, that was part of the Code Enforcement Ad Hoc Committee, and at the moment, I have nothing to report out. Moving on to public comments, this is non-agenda items. Any person may address a governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies or on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speech, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Requests for more time must be made to the city clerk with a timing limit to a maximum of six minutes. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Rodney Rodan.
What are you, Mayor? I told you I was coming back here. I'm going to get right in it. The infrastructure here is being band-aided. It's not being taken care of. If it took you from 2014 to fix the road inside, then you're doing absolutely nothing. And to make these feel-good comments that you're doing something, you're not. As far as your schools here, you have coaches at Marietta High School that takes the senior students and move them to play junior varsity ball, where the junior varsity students are not getting any playtime because the second-string team of the varsity is substituting to play JV ball. You're not teaching fair play in this place. So all this ice cream and cake speeches you guys got going? I mean, I don't understand it. As far as developing and fixing the stretch of the freeway, of course you're going to do that, because you're doing it for developers. What about the people inside the city? What about betterment for the people in the city? You guys are missing everything here. Everything. Everything. I fought for this country, and it's ridiculous how you guys cascade like you're doing something. Hell, I could do a better job than that, and I might just take it up on it. Mayor, as far as Vicky Troutman, and she claiming that she had permission from the police department to surveillance my house, I've contacted all you guys. You guys know you're being investigated by Department of Justice, and you're acting like you don't know. Come on. Kids can do better than this. What do you want? You want your kids to go to school and have a fair play? Nothing fear? You want them to grow up and lie and manipulate and cheat to win? You need to check with those head coaches you got in Marietta, because it's so wrong. These kids are not getting experience of high school and winning and losing. You build a character when you lose. You make them want to work harder to win. And you guys are setting a foul example. The city is a great place. I've been here thirty-one years. But this is not acting. These are people's lives, and you can do a better job. I don't run it off. I wish you guys well. And Mayor, you don't have to cut me down every time I ask for four minutes. You don't want to give me four minutes. You know why? Because I'm telling the truth. You guys have a good day, and I hope all of you guys lose your election. All of you.
Connie McConnell.
You guys are actors. Skew. I fought for this country. I deserve this. I did not go and attack the Capitol. I fought for the country. Those are losers who fought against the Capitol. You should be ashamed of yourself. I'm ashamed of another forty. Good enough.
Good evening. I have a long list for mine. Boy, you guys are in for it now. I've got two whole items. Number one, I just want to report on our Marietta Market Nights. We're doing well. And even though, yes, we did hold a market during setup time, and it was 114 degrees, everybody lived through it, and we really appreciate everybody who does come out when the weather's not perfect. It's going to be great this week, so please come out. I wanted to announce that we're going to start a new little thing. We're going, because our music usually goes from just six to eight at the alleyway. So from five to six, we want to start a time that the kids can come over and dance. So like for this week, we want to have like a Monster Mash-type dancing, Flying Purple People Eater, Monster Mash, all of those that are Halloween-related. So from five to six, it'll just be, it won't be a band. It'll be just a soundtrack. But the kids are welcome to come over there and dance and have a good time. We want to make it like a kids' party from that time. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about is actually from the Marietta Museum. And we are honoring veterans the whole month of November. Veterans who are from Marietta, there'll be displays, and we'll be honoring veterans for the whole month. That's it.
Thank you. Jamie Morales. Jamie Morales. Greg Langworthy.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jim Niederrecker. My colleagues and I live in Riverside County, and we're volunteers with United Sovereign Americans. We're not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans USA is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over twenty states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens, sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter roll database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and potential data teams. An analysis of the 2022 election, election researched by the highly qualified data teams using only official data provided by California elections officials indicates serious issues and compliance with federal law. We're here to present to you and the public the results of the aforementioned analysis, showing the votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under the law. We're not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidate in any race have wrongly won or lost their races, nor we do advocate for the overturning or the rerunning of any past elections. Tonight, we will present, present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest representatives, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution and you take the necessity for valid elections seriously by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Thank you. Our next three speakers will read the resolution, and then I'll conclude.
So yeah, I am Greg Langworthy. That was Jim. But I'm going to read the second part of the resolution. So whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, I think we all agree with that, it's a duty of our election officials, that's our ROV, to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. So that's the goal. So how do you get a free and fair election? So whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld, and you're going to understand these. The first one is the voter rolls must be accurate. It's like if you guys had an election of the board and there were seven votes, you would realize, eh, something's wrong. There was only five voters. The voter rolls must be accurate. Votes counted must be from eligible voters. Only you council members get to vote. In a general election, only constitutional voters get to vote. They got to be citizens. They have to be registered in Riverside County. They can't be living in another state. So votes counted must be from eligible voters. The number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted, and it just seems obvious, isn't it? That when you balance the bankbook, what you balance, what you put in's got to be what the bank says. Same thing in the election. You can't have more votes than the number of voters who actually voted. We're actually going to try to do that in this next election. We're going to try to count the number of voters who cast ballots, and at the end of the election, we're going to look at the machines. Do they balance? And number four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. So the system has got to be very accurate, and that's what gives people confidence that whoever won really did win. Okay, now what's the data? Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appeared to violate both federal and state laws, including, and these will probably seem amazing to you, 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registrants 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registrants are now on our California voter roll. 2,776,939 votes were cast by ineligible or uncertain registration. So people who had an uncertain registration actually voted over 200 million times in the 2022 election. There were 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. So you did have more voters than the ballots that were actually cast. And then finally, 2,776,849 apparent voting violations, or 2022 election was not at all accurate. So thank you for listening. Next speaker.
Carol Butcher.
Good day. My name is Carol Butcher and I'm here to read into the record the next section of the USA Resolution. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal, whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election, whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us and demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to the qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked secured ballots similar to currency, where imaging technology is used for tabulation. The security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructures, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Thank you.
Tim Smith.
Good evening. My name is Tim Smith and I'm here to read into the record the last section of the USA Resolution. Point number five. Adjudication must be signed off by party candidate and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Number six. Ballots, regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven. A national institute of standards and technology-compliant, randomized, statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight. If the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Number nine. Waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Marietta City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here, we implore the Riverside Board of, Riverside County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and county registrars of voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people.
Madam Mayor, we do have a request from Jim Niedecker, who has donated time from Tom Dykes.
I'm going to guess that none of you expected to hear that 2.8 million votes were cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations in the 2022 general election. Am I right? Or that 124,000 more votes were counted than voters who voted? Our system is broken. It's just, it's unbelievable. So what you heard tonight is a powerfully-written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. The cost for not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable. So we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for your next city council meeting, where you can vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. The United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely informative election videos. So we encourage you to visit uniforfreedom.com and learn more about our organization, our goal to restore valid elections through our country. So the website is unite, the number four, and freedom.com. It's an excellent website. There's loads of information out there. I encourage you to go take a look. I will make sure you have my contact information. I'm betting you'll have some questions. If you don't get those off the website, I'm happy to answer those questions. If I can't, I'll get the answers from the USA Organization. This is a really important resolution and we're asking that you would consider putting this on an agenda and bringing it to a vote. We want the public to know and we want all our local leaders to support this so we can get it corrected at the state level. Thanks for your time.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to consent calendar approval of items 1 through 10. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from city council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk? Are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
No public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Can I have a motion and a second, please? Motion by Councilmember Lavelle, second by MP T. Warren. Please vote.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah, I guess I'd need a vote.
Madam Mayor, motion carries unanimously 5-0. I would like to note the recusal. I assume that's for the consent calendar item of number seven for Councilmember DeForest. Is that correct? Okay, the motion carries unanimously with the adoption of ordinance 611-24, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marietta amending the compensation of the City Council, and ordinance 612-244, an ordinance of the City of Marietta to repeal Marietta Municipal Code Sections 2.08090, 130, 150, 170, which set forth regulations for the city's relationship with the city manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to discussion, item 11, construction contract for the amphitheater parking and lot entryway monument project. Staff, begin whenever you are ready.
Thank you so much. Ryan Crawford, Senior Program Manager with Community Services, here to talk about the Town Square Park Amphitheater Parking Lot and Entryway Project. That's a long title. We're just going to call it "The Project" from now on, okay? So before I get into the details of the project, I want to make sure that everybody understands that this was a real team effort from multiple departments over a few years, making sure that we had the right design, making sure that we dialed in the scope of work to something manageable. So we had a lot of help from Public Works and Engineering, from the City Manager's Office, Development Services, Community Services. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this is a real team effort. So you can see from the slide up here, we have a number of different elements for this project. The most important part of it is the parking lot with the lighting. So this is showing the parcels just north of Town Square Park, right behind, right behind City Hall here. So we're going to be constructing a parking lot. It's going to have lighting and a lot of nice landscaping improvements surrounding the parking lot that's in green, just to the south of the access road. We're also going to change the access driveway onto the access road. Currently, it's a rolled curb. We're going to change it into a standard driveway entrance. It's going to be a lot less bumpy. You won't need a Jeep to drive over it. The next improvement, we're going to be installing a drain. I think everybody is aware that when we get rain during the winter, that we have an accumulation of rain in that parcel just to the north of where we're going to build the parking lot. We see the nice birds that like to roost there for a couple months out of the year. We're going to be installing a drain. It's like a big bathtub drain. And we're going to be doing some grading improvements to that parcel so we eliminate the standing water. And then we are also going to be adding some lighting for the existing parking lot and the pathway out back. We don't really have a lot of lighting on that parking lot. So in addition to the lighting on the new parking lot, there'll be matching lighting on the existing parking lot and then we'll have pathway lighting. One of the most exciting parts about this is we're going to be putting a monument on the corner of Jefferson and Calmia as, I'll be showing you some pictures of that in just a moment. Has two video boards, an obelisk in the center, lots of landscaping improvements. It's going to look really, really nice so we can get rid of the PVC signage that we usually put on the corner over there with some really nice video slides on some video boards that the traffic that's driving by can see fairly easily. We're also going to be putting trees and landscaping with irrigation along Calmia Street so we can have a bit of a windbreak for those parcels and just kind of beautify the area a little bit. And I think it's going to be really nice for people to walk around down Calmia. So here you see a plan view of the monument. This is an overhead view. We take the sidewalk coming from the parking lot behind City Hall all the way to the corner there. And then we have a number of landscaping improvements, lots of trees that are matching what we have along Jefferson Avenue. We're going to have a double row of trees that curves around. And then we'll have the, the video boards on the wings of the monument there. Next, you can see a perspective of what we're going to be building. It's really, really nice and it's got a really nice presence with that column and then the city seal on top of the column. And then those are going to be five-by-10 digital video boards. Those are being provided by Lamar Advertising as part of our contract with Lamar. So they're giving those to us. They're going to install those for us. And we're going to be able to, we'll have a policy in place with what we can put up on those video boards and, and have a regular rotation of informational items that we could place on there. This shows a perspective from that street corner of the monument. One of the elements that we're also going to be doing with this project is you can see there are some boxes there on the sidewalk on the corner. We're going to be moving those two boxes to the other side of the street so there'll be, so there won't be any obstruction of the monument itself. So we have a number of funding sources for this project. Probably the most important thing is the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. We have $2 million from that fund. Those need to be committed to a project by the end of the year. So with this project, by awarding the contract, we'll be, we'll be complying with the requirements from the fed, federal government on those and applying them to a project. We'll also be using some gas tax for moving those boxes across the street, which are traffic-related. They're traffic signal control boxes and then also meter pedestal for Edison. We use gas tax for those. We'll also be tapping into our tree replacement fund. We basically collect funding from developers that are removing trees from other projects. They give us money. We find different areas to install new trees. We thought this would be a really great way to use those funds along Calmia. We also have ARPA unallocated interest. So those ARPA dollars have been sitting in our bank account for a bit. They're gaining interest and this is one of the benefits is we are going to use some of that interest on this project. And then Measure T. Now, I'll also note that these are listed in the order that they're going to be spent. So if we don't need to spend Measure T, if we don't need to spend the unallocated interest, that interest does not need to be committed by the end of the year. That can be used for other projects, can be rolled into other CIP projects that I'm sure I'll be working on in the next couple of months with our nice schedule. So I want everybody to understand the process that we go through briefly for any kind of public works project. We go through an extensive design process where we design exactly what we want. We put bid documents together that tells our contractors that are going to be bidding on the project exactly what we intend to do, what their requirements are, all the rules they need to follow, and how we want it built and the materials that we want them to use to build our projects. So we put that all into a nice bid package that was sent out and published in August and then those bids were due in September. We received eight bids and we are recommending the award to our lowest responsive bidder, which is D. Ark Engineering and Construction Incorporated. And the contract value is just over $2.3 million. So I'm sure everybody is wondering about the schedule. We have a lot of things going on in Town Square Park in the beginning of November. So we have our Field of Honor. We have Veterans Day Parade. We also have things going on in December. So we are going to try to mitigate any kind of interference with the things that are going on in Town Square Park. We're hoping to start the project just after our Veterans Day Parade, where we'll put up construction fencing with screening in the areas that we are going to have to have construction equipment in, in our lay-down yard. So we'll put that up hopefully by mid-November. And then we anticipate being completed by the end of January. And this is also, of course, dependent on how much rain we get. The first order of business is getting that drain installed so we don't accumulate any water in that, that parcel. Any questions and comments?
Brian, thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate you and your team. Can you go back to the picture of the monument, please?
Yes.
Just.
This one or?
No. This one right here.
Okay.
It is, it appears to me that it's blocking the screen.
So the video boards are parallel to the streets. So when you have standing traffic coming east on Calmia, they are able to see the video board to their right.
Okay.
And then when you have traffic going to the north from Jefferson, they're able to see the video board there on their left.
Okay.
So if you were to look at it from, not, not a lot of traffic comes in from a corner just like that. So while, you know, we really can't do anything about the traffic signal, we have put, we have raised the screens up so much that we think that it's going to be a pretty decent line of sight for most drivers. And we also don't really want them looking at it while they're driving. We want them looking at it while they're standing at the stoplight, stoplights. So. So hopefully, they'll be able to see everything.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for the clarification.
Yes.
Councilmember Holliday, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The obelisk, will that have any illumination on it at night?
Yes. So there is some landscape uplights at the base of the column. Those will be lit all the time at night.
Will that interfere with the LED screen at night?
No, because they won't be shown on the LED screens. They're going to be mainly focused on the column.
No spillover light?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
We do not have any public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilmembers, I'm going to bring it up for discussion in discussion. Seeing none, call for a motion. I see a motion already in the queue from MPT Warren, seconded by Councilmember LaBelle. I am clicking it. Oh, there we go. Okay.
Motion carries unanimously for the construction contract awarded to DARC East and Sea Inc. with the amendment to the fiscal year 2024-2025 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And Brian, thank you and your team again. Moving on to discussion item number 12, Rules and Procedures. Oh, thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, I made it. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you know, my name is Crystal McDonald, and I am the City Clerk of the City of Marietta. Today, we're going to be talking about Rules of Procedures. Rules of Procedures, it's about a 22-page document that basically provides various rules and protocols that assist the City Council and city staff in conducting city business. They are adopted by resolution, and that is pursuant to our municipal code. So Resolution 24-4791, that's actually what's before you today. I just want to give you a little bit of a background. On July 31st, you all held a workshop where Rules of Procedures was discussed. The purpose of today is to really review the direction that was provided. A workshop, as you know, is more of a study session, and you just kind of give us some guidance, and then we come back so you can ratify whatever action you deem appropriate. So I do want to verify that I did capture everything. There was a lot of discussion, and so I memorialized it the best way that I could, and I did only work with items that I deemed actionable. So if I did miss something, my apologies, and this is the opportunity for you to go ahead and add or have a discussion about it, okay? So it's not set in stone, certainly. So during the July 31st workshop, you all talked about three specific items, as you all know. Hopefully, you remember that. It was future agenda items. That is, how does a council member get an item on the agenda? Presiding officer, we're going to call it the mayor rotation, and then also motion for reconsideration, which was a procedural question. So I'm going to go over these three sections individually, and that will allow further discussion if needed or not. Before I move on, do I have any questions before we move forward?
Seeing none.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so the first one is future agenda items. And so right there before you is technically the current procedure, and I say that with emphasis. And so currently, the resolution actually says two council members can request via the city manager directly or request consensus during a council meeting. In 2023, we actually updated it, and so our primary way for the council members to ask for items is to do it through the agenda process at the dais under request for items to a future agenda, which you're all very familiar with at this point. So that is what we moved to in 2023. And so after the workshop, what the proposed procedure is, is basically one council member can talk to the city manager and request an item get on the agenda. And with that, and I apologize, there's a battery issue with Councilmember DeForest. So would you like me to pause, ma'am, or am I okay to move forward? Okay. So one council member can request from the city manager to add an item if they were to contact her. After the city manager reviews it, and that includes any costs associated with it, he or she will add the item to the agenda under discussion because she deems it appropriate. Or she can actually inform the council member, it's not really required to be an agenda item. This is something that her and her staff can handle without bringing it to the dais. So there's instances like that that probably happen more so than one would think. And then lastly, she can also, depending on costs and staff time, the city manager can say, okay, I'm going to put it on the agenda under future agenda item requests, and it'll be agendized so you can formally request it of your colleagues like you do now. The benefit to doing that this way versus the current way is that then it does, because it's on the agenda, it allows you to expand more so on the requested item. I know that was something Councilmember LaBelle expressed that he wanted. And so that's really what I was hearing at the workshop. And so that is what the next, the proposed protocol looks like. And with that, I'm asking the council to advise and inform me on whether or not I captured what it was you saw it, and if not, if you would like any changes to be made. And of course, Kimberly will be over there making any updates, because we can do this on the floor if needed. Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Holliday, yes. You won't do it? There you go. You're in the queue. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't look at a document and put my name in the queue at the same time. I lose my document. So thank you for the clarification and what you heard at the meeting. I think you captured it perfectly. The verbiage in the resolution, I don't, it can be read a couple of different ways, and I think it may need a little bit of clarification. So as you described it, any council member goes to city manager. If the city manager says, oh, we can handle that, that's no problem, it's done. If it's something that needs a vote of the council, a discussion of the council, she can choose to put it on the agenda. And if there's more staff time or cost to it, then it goes under future agenda items, where, as you pointed out in your staff report, we can then discuss it at that time because it's agendized. That part, I don't think we actually talked about at the workshop, but I think that is genius. So thank you very much. But the way the resolution is written is that any council member may request an item be added to a future agenda by contacting the city manager, who will assist in determining how and if it should be placed on agenda. Kind of insinuates that city manager could say, no, you can't put that on there, which was not the intent. It was just, I understand what you were trying to say there is how and if it's necessary to be on agenda, but it kind of reads that it's the city manager's call whether it ever gets agendized or not, which was not the intent.
Understood. And yes, the intent was if was, the if really was, if you're asking for something that really did not require it to be on the agenda, that she and her staff could handle.
Correct.
So we can definitely clarify that and with the language that you actually just provided, if that's appropriate.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's all I have. Good job.
All right.
Okay, so I'm going back to, trying to figure out how to get back. Okay, here we go. Yeah. Actually, this is really bitchin', by the way. I really like it. Yeah. Seeing no other council members in the queue. Okay.
I can move on, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm just making sure everybody gets to say what they need to say. So the next topic of discussion is, I'm going to call out the mayor rotation, if that is all right with you.
Yes.
So as shown on the slide there, you'll see the current procedure. It's done in the second meeting in December. There's a qualification, at least serve two years on the council as mayor pro temp prior to serving mayor. It's a rotation based off of seniority. If there are two or more council members, then there is a tie, then it's based on the highest number of votes, which we know is an issue since you're by district at this point. No obligation to serve and no successive terms, and it's one year. So that's currently how your rotation reads. The biggest change that I heard from the workshop was that you no longer wanted rotation, but you wanted selection. So we would transition to a selective protocol. So this one was a little tricky for me, because at the workshop, I was hearing a lot of different things that I think you all wanted the same thing, but it was hard for me to kind of combine into one, and so just bear with me. Somebody wanted a policy, somebody didn't really want a policy, and then we wanted framework, right? We wanted general guidelines. We wanted just expectations was a word that was said. And so with that, I hope that this in some way identifies what it is you were exactly asking for. So we would move from rotation, there's no more auto-rotation, to selection, and we would have considerations. And when I say we, I mean you. You would have considerations as to in the selection of the mayor or mayor pro temp. So one of those would be considerations would be previous and current council member tenure, having served as a mayor pro temp prior to serving as mayor, that is a consideration, and then demonstrates the ability to perform responsibilities. And that's where I kind of listed, thank you to public comments, and also to Councilmember Holliday's handout that he had provided that has all of those bullet points I did in the best way that I could. And I'm going to read it for the record, just so we're super clear. Proper and professional representation of the city council as a whole, inclusivity of all city council members, preside over city council members, over city council meetings efficiently, accurately articulate the council's majority opinion to the public, is professional and courteous to staff and public at all times, upholds the city council's city manager form of government, and informs the city manager only of any departmental concerns, collaborates and considers the input of all stakeholders, including city council members, of course, and maintains integrity and honesty at all times. So those are the considerations for selection when the time comes. And with that, I'm asking the council if this is, if this suits what you all wanted, or if there's discussion or changes or updates, or did I get it completely wrong?
No, I think you hit every major point. I see Councilmember DeForest in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we had talked before, and you did an amazing job of putting this together. Thank you so much, Crystal. I know that we talked about having a policy or framework, and I just think that whether the rotation, at least it gave a little bit of framework, this kind of seems like it may be too general. So that's just my two cents, whatever my colleagues would say to that as well. To this, it reads like if you, I mean, Lori and I are the longest on the council, and it just seems that, you know, city council member tenure is a very high priority, so, or experience, which I heard before as well. So I will, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, but now is the time after your discussion, if you all decide to add something, give some more direction, you know, to myself, that's certainly the time.
Let's start with everyone that's in the queue. Let's just hear what everybody has to say, and then afterwards, we can come back with any additional comments or ideas. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I do believe that one thing that is not on this list is a new elected council member would not be allowed for the selection of mayor or mayor pro temp. Is that correct? But I remember when we were talking, we did say newly elected. That word, those words were used, so I don't see that in this document. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, MPT Warren. Councilmember LaBelle.
I just want to comment, I like that, I don't think I can poke any holes in this subjective language. I think before we had some language that was not as objective as these here, and I think you did a great job on these. I think the Councilwoman DeForest's comment, I guess in question, although the 1, 2, 3, those are considerations. So those are, I think, like a framework to use as you're deciding those selections. I don't think it's a mandate, it's just they're calling out like, hey, these are things that you can look at or should look at, they're not a must look at. Yeah. So I think it's just pointing the needle a certain direction as you have the discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember LaBelle. I'm going to agree with you. We've had a council member that took a decade off and was reelected, and I don't think that it would be fair with, you know, his experience and the quality that he would bring to our city to prevent him if there was a majority that wanted him to be voted in as mayor pro temp or even as mayor. That's just a suggestion. I believe that everything that you brought forward is exactly what we discussed. I think it hits every single major point. Personally, I believe that we've all been elected by our respective constituents to serve them. And while, yes, it would be kind of nice if somebody could be elected for a year just to get to understand the, how government works, even though I came from a political background, it was like going to college the minute that I sat up here. I have to tell you, there's a lot to learn. There is a lot to learn. I believe maybe just saying having one year experience, I would like to see, but again, we've all been elected. It's up to council to decide who they believe would represent the city as mayor pro temp or as mayor. I don't believe that you would have to be a mayor pro temp in order to serve as mayor. And yes, I've only been elected for four years, and Cindy Warren was appointed and then reelected, and the juniors are Ron and John. But if there was an opportunity for any one of these great public servants to sit in this middle chair, everyone would do a great job. So I think it's up to council to decide who they want to represent the city and not put restrictions on that process, and that's just my personal opinion.
Madam Mayor, may I just add one thing to this, to say that no council member may serve as mayor twice in a row? Because I don't see that on here.
I think that's in, so that wasn't, if it wasn't discussed, it remains.
It remains.
Yes, and that was in the packet that you received in the resolution itself, but would you like me to pull that language?
No, I'll go to it. No worries.
Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, great job. Madam City Clerk, I think you captured the intent of that meeting very well. I wanted to echo Councilmember LaBelle's comments. These are guidelines, these are considerations, that just, you know, when you're trying to figure out who you want to represent this council as mayor, or mayor pro tem, these are things to look at. So, the previous and current city council member tenure talks about that maybe a brand-new elected member, who has no experience at all prior to that, maybe is not a good choice. But as Mayor Stone mentioned, that a council member who served for eight years, and then went off for a little bit and came back, might not need to meet that same criteria. So, I agree with both of those points. And these are not, to Councilmember DeForest's comment, these are not, in my opinion, listed as 1, 2, 3, you have to do 1, then you gotta look at 2, then you look at 3, they're just, these are the considerations, one doesn't have more preference than another. And so, I think you've captured it well. And I don't have any suggested changes.
Just also want to piggyback on Councilmember Holliday's comments. I also look at this, he just kind of triggered something. We still, with all of these, with all of these recommendations, which are a great compass for having these discussions and thoughts, at the end of the day, if this goes away, the five of us still make the decision. And if we make a decision to put someone who's been here for a year, that's the decision of the council. Because all five of us were elected. So, again, I think we're up here for a reason, and we can make decisions for reasons that may or may not exist. And the needs of the city may not always be exactly what we understand today. So, that's all.
Councilmember Holliday, is that an old? Okay, so, no one's in the queue, so, let's bring it back for an actual discussion. We have one more, what?
She has one more.
Oh.
There's one more, torchlight.
Oh, sorry.
But for the mayor rotation, just so we're clear, because there was a request from Councilmember Warren, on an addition, but what I'm hearing is, that's not necessarily something this council wants to move forward with, is that correct? This was, their newly-elected council member is not allowed?
The only reason I said it is that was, when we were speaking about this last time, we, that was something that was brought up by several of us. So, that's why I was asking.
Okay, but we've just, you have decided to table that?
Aye.
Okay. And then, any of, Councilmember DeForest, is there anything that you would like to add to this, or are we going to move forward as is?
Let's move forward.
Based off, okay. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we are gonna bring this back for discussion, or is this the discussion moment right now?
This is the discussion. If you adopt the resolution, it'll be effective immediately.
I'd like to, I'd like to recommend removing that you have to serve as mayor pro tem to serve as mayor.
Oh, so, the, I'm gonna, for purposes of discussion, on your PowerPoint slide there, number 2?
Yes.
You would like to strike that?
Lori, I agree with you, but again, because it's a recommendation, it could be a velvet dagger in these thoughts.
Based on the workshop that we had, and the public comments that we had, I understand that this is just a suggestion, but again, some people will hold us to the wall on this, and so, I would like to have it removed.
I'm okay with that.
But again, going forward, one of the suggestions we talked about is, we should never appoint someone as mayor pro tem, who's not, who we don't feel should be mayor. And I think it addresses both those sides. So, it's saying, that that should be kind of the intent.
Then add the language, that there's no guarantee you're gonna be mayor, if you've been selected as mayor pro tem.
I think that was in my suggestions.
If you go back several, several years ago, there was a mayor pro tem that became mayor, who unfortunately, had some issues with the law. And so, I don't want...
I am happy with that amendment.
Okay.
Yes. So, we have, so, can you just repeat for the record, because Kimberly's actually taking this down for me?
Yes.
We're gonna be striking?
We will add verbiage, that even though you've served as mayor pro tem, it does not automatically mean that you will serve as the mayor.
We could take out all of the ability to perform responsibilities, too. I mean, I think that if somebody was legal, if there was something going on that way, then we would all have a discussion. And here, we would remove them, and not do that. I think that that is a guideline, and I think that that needs to be a framework that we go forward with. But that is just my opinion, and I'm not sure if there's three votes to the other.
Councilmember LaBelle?
I would just say, remove it, rather than add the language.
Okay. Councilmember Holliday? Okay, we have consensus to remove item number 2.
We're just gonna strike it completely?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Okay, moving on to the next item, please.
Yes. So, okay. So, the next item is a motion for reconsideration, and so, this is just procedural. So, the last discussion, this is the current motion for reconsideration, it's actually still very similar to what the proposed, if I may just transition over to that. Really, I'm just leaning on Roberts' Rules of Orders, and that's the procedures that we tend to lean on, if there is a question, or if there's something we need answered. And so, basically, I'm asking that the council change it to, any council member who voted on the prevailing side of the original motion, may move a reconsideration to consider new information, or correct inadvertent errors, on a non-public hearing item, which has been added pursuant to Roberts' Rules, at the same time, or the next meeting. So, during our discussion, what I heard was, I think it was Councilmember Warren who liked the, to correct inadvertent errors, but we wanted to keep a timeframe, which was the same meeting, or the next meeting. So, I kept with that, which is what the current protocol says. I also added, I requested that we add to the agenda itself, a section for reconsiderations, and that's really just so council members are allowed the opportunity to do it timely, and there's no, you know, I forgot to do something, or something of that nature. It's there, it doesn't get used very often, but it is there as a tool, so to speak, for council members. And then, the latter part of it is similar, basically, once you, after a motion for reconsideration has been acted on, no other motion for reconsideration can be made, without unanimous consensus, consent of the entire council. So, this is more procedural, but I am open for further discussion, I want to make sure that this language is okay with this council.
Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It says, "on a non-public hearing item." What is the difference?
So, any discussion item, if it's a public hearing, then we have to treat motion for reconsiderations differently. Because you have an applicant, developers, we've done noticing, and I can lean on Tiffany to give you the legal explanation, but really, Roberts' Rules does state that, if it's a public hearing, there's going to be some limitations. And this is a reminder that this is a procedure, that can be waived, or if there is a question at the time, we would definitely lean on our city attorney, which I do have in my notes to run that by you, just so we're clear.
Okay, so, if it was a public hearing, that we were, would it be the same, would we go about it the same way? I know the procedures for getting it on the agenda are different, but would we still bring that up at the same time, with the same timeframes?
Under Roberts' Rules, you have to make the motion at that meeting. It has to be that night, when the parties impacted by the notice, and if there's an applicant, et cetera, are present. You can't do it later.
So, it's, so the difference is, it has to be done at the same meeting? Well, I would suggest we put that language in there, then.
Yes, we could certainly do that.
For non-public hearing items, the same, or next, for public hearings, the same meeting. And that would clarify that. I don't think I had any other questions on that. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else in the queue?
So, with that, I'm going to ask the council to adopt the resolution as amended, and all the amendments have been stated in the record, and we will make those corrections, additions, and then, if I can just ask the mayor to call for a motion a second, if there are no additional comments.
Madam City Clerk, are we allowed to go back to the very first one, and for you to specifically state what the resolution is? So, I have clarity, I don't have clarity of what the new policy will be. Thank you.
The first one being, how future agenda items are added?
Yes, please, thank you.
Yes, and I am going to ask Kimberly, because I warned her that this may happen. So, Kimberly's actually been typing away, so if we can give her a moment, and if not, the city attorney can do that.
Okay. I understood that we are going to add clarifying language on the resolution, clarifying the portion which could be interpreted as the city manager deciding if it does go on the agenda, or if it doesn't, to reflect the language that was stated on the agenda report, where she puts it on the agenda, where the city council may discuss it in a much more thorough manner.
And it's just, one council member may request not to?
Yes, one council member.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Proceed, Madam City Clerk.
I would love for you to call for a motion in a second?
Okay.
And adopt the resolution as amended, on the floor?
Oh, there it is. You got it? Okay, perfect. I will call a motion for the recommendation for the new policy, for the procedures, correct? Thank you.
Yes, she's gonna display the, can we display the recommendation, please, so she can see that it's amending the resolution?
Thank you.
That adopts the rules of procedures.
Resolution number, yes, thank you. To adopt a resolution number 24-4791, entitled "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California: Amending the Rules and Procedure for City Council Meetings Related Functions and Activity as Amended," to clarify the language of the resolution, which could be interpreted as the city manager deciding if it continues or not, to be clarified with the language stated on the agenda report, with the city manager agendizing the requests under requests. I need a motion, and a second. I have a motion by Councilmember LaBelle, and a second. I don't have a second? Oh, how come it's not here? Second by Councilmember Holliday, please vote. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Motion carries unanimacy as amended, 5-0.
Fantastic, council, and fantastic, Madam City Clerk, thank you so much. Moving on to governing body announcements. Governing body announcements is an opportunity for council, city council, to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. A city clerk will use the computerized timer, and will begin with Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. As you can see, it was very, very busy couple of weeks. I'd like to thank Congressman Darrell Issa for meeting with me about Southwest Riverside Higher Education Coalition. Also, I spoke at the Marietta Valley Unified School District Board Meeting, in opposition to the location of a school at Ivy and Hayes. I'd just like to say, thank you to the district for reaching out as our mayor. Thank you, Lori, for sending a letter with all of our support in opposition to where they're planning on putting a school. And thanks to the district for reaching out and partnering with us, and we hope to find a more suitable location to keep our kids safe. If you need to reach me, you can reach me at my cell, which is located at the last, oh, my husband picked a car at the rod run, so that was his truck. It happened to be for sale, I did take a picture of that, great, amazing event. All the events have been amazing, and thanks to everyone. I have been doing a lot of meetings lately, and several emails, phones, questions, that's being asked, and I just want to clarify, as a council, we approve the apartments because we have no choice, because of California housing laws, especially the Housing Accountability Act. The state mandates the number of units, single-family, multifamily units, low-income, et cetera. We have met that number of units, and have a certified housing element, which is fantastic, because that means we do not have to add any more units. We, Mayor Pro Tem Warren, Mayor Stone, Councilmembers LaBelle and Holliday, and I have been united front on all appeals and approval of the housing in the City of Marietta. And I know we all stand ready to answer many of your questions, which I know they're talking about, not just in District 3, but other districts as well. So, I know that many constituents will be reaching out to my fellow colleagues on this issue as well. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember LaBelle?
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I just have that one event, I think we all were there, the dignitary event at the Hot Springs, and I forget the name of the restaurant that they were opening. Talia? Talia? And just a notable moment, I think me and Mr. Maling had a competition on who could eat the most mahi that night.
Looks like he won.
We measured in pounds, so it was a great night. If you haven't, is it open?
Yes.
If you haven't been there, it's a great restaurant, amazing food selection, and just very unique flavors that I have not seen in the city yet, so, thank you. That's all.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember LaBelle. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since I deferred mine last time, and the list, my lisp is list, the list is lengthy. No, not yet. Couple of things, I attended the I-15 auxiliary lanes ribbon-cutting in Temecula, and represented the mayor there to give the certificate to Temecula, and Caltrans representative for District 8, which is our area, was there. And in my comments, I said, "I'm not speaking to anyone in a particular Caltrans, but we need these in Marietta, too." So, I've put them on notice, I know that the elected collaborative is working on this diligently, and so, I was just trying to plant the seed that we're coming forward. And I was excited to see, in Mr. Maling's report of the Keller Road interchange, that that whole improvement includes auxiliary lanes between Scott Road and Keller Road on both directions. And so, having those already identified and in the project is a huge step forward. So, I appreciate that. Let's see what else. I went to the RCA's 20th Anniversary Celebration Hidden Valley Wildlife Area, can't believe that, I mean, I was around when RCA and the MSHCP were created, and the development community hated it. I don't know that they're in love with it yet, but the work they have done, and the land they've conserved, and the species that have moved from endangered, to threatened, to, some have moved to common, and are not even on the list anymore. We've done some great work. Finding that balance between responsible development and species is not always easy. So, it was nice to be there. Supervisor Jim Venable and Supervisor Buster, previous supervisor, were both in attendance. It was good to see them both. The only other one I wanted to go into, I mean, the rod one was great, Susan G. Coman was great, got my two miles in, John. But I went to the Camp Pendleton's 82nd Anniversary. The picture's on the screen, they had a horse-drawn color guard. So, it was their 82nd celebration. All the electeds from a huge region are invited, there's only three or four of us that typically show up for anything. I try and show up when I can, being a veteran myself, we support the military, we have a lot of Pendleton Marines in Marietta, and surrounding communities, so I always like to support them. I've gotten to meet the new general, General Nick Brown, twice now, and so, at some point in the future, I may be inviting him to events, since he invites me to all of his. And if you have any questions, my email is the best way to get ahold of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren?
Are you done, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah. He's kind of. Well, since he went over his two minutes, I will be... Well, since he went over his two minutes, I will be brief. It was a busy couple of weeks. And you can see, when they come up, you can see that I've been here, there, and everywhere. I did, right after the RCTC meeting, I raced over to the 7/11 re-grand opening. It must have happened in a nanosecond, because I got there shortly after. I mean, like shortly after 11:00, nobody was there. But I did go in and thank them, so I was there. I raced across town, maybe doing the speed limit, maybe not. I'm just saying. But I got there safely. I know. I want to thank our mayor for hosting the Susan G. Komen Human Ribbon Event. That was a lot of fun. And I hope that we have more people next year so we can make the ribbon look a little fatter. It needs to be a little fatter.
Well, the thing is, last year I had a ladder to climb, but...
Oh, is that one?
And I didn't have a ladder this year, so it's a little cattywampus. What can I say?
It was. Also, I did meet with volunteer at Marietta Elementary School. It's just been a blessing for me, and I do that every Monday for two hours. And it's just a wonderful way to start your week off in my world. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for the networking breakfast. Tom Grimes from Avatar Web Services did an outstanding job on cybersecurity and how to prevent that. And so, Patrick, thank you. That was a very good topic, and he did an excellent job. And I want to congratulate the Marietta Fire and Rescue Employee Recognition and Promotion Ceremony was outstanding. The dispatcher of the year is Carly Payne. Civilian employer of the year is Sue Ann Herring. And fighter fire of the year is Mike... Thank you. Yes, I wasn't going to mess that up. I also attended the Marietta Unified School District Board Meeting in support of our council opposing the site. And if you go to the next screen, I want you to see that that card at the very, very, very right is the one I dream of all the time. And someday, I'm going to get to write in one. I, too, attended the More Than Pink Walk. And to see these survivors out there and to see the people that are in remission is hope. And there's nothing better than a day of hope. So thank you so very much for the city of Marietta for giving us all hope, those that are struggling, those that are fighting, and those that have lost. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, MPT Warren. You can view my governing body announcements on our website. The only thing I'm going to talk about tonight is I'm a founding board member of the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation. And I'm the one that lobbied to bring the Race for the Cure to the inland empire. And our first race was in 1999. So being the mayor and being a founding board member, it hit home for me what this means to our community and to our region. We had 1,000 more participants this year than from last year. And I really appreciate the support for those that have been recently diagnosed, those that are going through treatment, those that have thrived through the disease, and those that have lost their lives. And the reason why I got involved was my mother was diagnosed with breast cancer and met her demise six months after her diagnosis. So being an advocate for early detection for breast cancer marks 30 years this December that my mom lost her life. And it's 30 years that I've been advocating for men and women. And more men and women are living with metastatic breast cancer today because of the efforts of Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation. More than $1.1 billion has been raised for research, education, and outreach. And I will continue to fight until we find the cure. So thank you so much. And you can go on the website and see all of my meetings that I attended. Moving on to council member requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. Now's the time for council members' requests to add or withdraw items for future agendas. There will be no discussion on the request. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues? Seeing none? Before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I'd like to share the following message in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. October is a time for all of us to come together and raise awareness of this devastating disease it affects. Anyone can get breast cancer. It is important to get checked regularly. Advancements in early detection methods support continue to increase the chances of survival. And lastly, I'd like to give strength and support to the individuals affected, the families and their caregivers, to survivors and those that are undergoing treatment. With no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I would just like to...
I have one comment that I need to make with regards to item number 12, Rules of Procedures. There was no public comment on this item, so thank you.
And now, can you adjourn?
Yes, and now I will adjourn.
Thank you.